More have they gone to his house, six houses.
That's right.
Yeah, I understand. Okay, we're going to break this order at this time. Make sure it's all worth it. Did you play any indication?
That's great. Lord, thank you this day, and thank you for all the things you've done for us. I want to thank you for protecting these families from COVID and making the ones that had problems negatively impacted whole again, and bless them and our loved ones. And I want to pray for the commissioners here today. Make sure we make the right decisions. Vote for the right thing, not just some nouns. In Jesus' name.
I'm very grateful to the United States of America and to the republic of this land, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, infinite.
Okay. Pat, you need to make any additions or declarations?
Yes, sir. We have a couple of time-sensitive issues we'd like to add. One being a visitation by the county clerk or the court, Mr. Jay Swisher. Second one being a job description for the purchasing officer. We have a vacancy that we need to fill, so we want to get the new job description approved so we can get it advertised as soon as possible. And then finally, we have one deletion. We'd like to take the appointments to the planning and zoning board and pull them from this agenda and put them on the next agenda so they can be under discussion for the board to consideration.
Okay. Major, do you got anything else?
I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second, got a motion in a second, all the table.
The, um...
Let's see. Yeah.
Can we push it back?
Wait till we get to that subject.
Stu got stuck behind a school bus?
I know.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So let's move on to Dale Williams. Make sure Hospital.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board and staff. For the record, my name is Dale Williams. Wherever it has, but today I'm here as the executive director of the Lake Shore Hospital Authority. And here to ask the Board of County Commissioners, as a recently appointed court receiver for the authority, to adopt an operating budget effective for the fiscal year October 1st of '21 and ending September 30th of '22. A standard fiscal year, the same as your own. A few housekeeping items before we get into the actual agenda. One, there are differences, but there are a lot of similarities between the authority as a special district and the Board of County Commissioners, which is a political subdivision. One of those is that we are required by law to use communications media technology. The purpose of that, because a lot of special districts are multi-county, so it only makes sense with today's technology that somebody who lives in Taylor County that may want to participate in a water management meeting should not have to drive all the way to Sponti County. Even though the authority's limits are Columbia County, there was no exceptions made in the communications media technology requirement. So we do honor that because we are required to legally. In order to assist us, because we do not have at the authority an IT department, we contract with a company called the NOC. And this is the reason you see Mr. Carl Fingit. Carl, raise your hand. Carl is conducting this portion of the meeting as communications media technology, as we are required to do by law. So there will be a portion here in public comment where you can't ask if anybody is watching by CMT that wants to ask a question. But having said that, the rest of the agenda is pretty much the same and will be conducted the same as you would most any regular meeting. All right. Our agenda for today, Mr. Chairman, is first, there are no additions or deletions of the board and staff. I don't know if there's anything that any member of the board would like to add, but we certainly have no additions or deletions. And if there are none, on your part, we would ask that you adopt the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, adopt. Second, got a motion in a second, all the favor.
And again, just as a reminder, during the public comment portion, in addition to those who may be here in attendance, it would be appropriate, Mr. Chairman, if you would ask Carl if anybody is wishing to ask a question online. But through that, we can accept our public comments.
Have any other audience wanted to come in?
Is there a time limit?
Two-minute time limit.
Good morning, Commissioners. My question is, maybe I missed it, maybe I didn't have my glasses on right. What I wanted to find out in this operating budget, if it stays the, um... expenditures are given to Fred Coperline, the board attorney. And that comment would go to Dale unless you guys see what legal services he provides. Since there's not a board, why should the board be paying $750 a month to Fred Coperline? And I did not see that in salaries.
Would you like to make an answer right now, Mr. Chairman, or when we present?
Yeah, I think that's pretty obvious.
If we look at the operating funds, we have budgeted legal services for the coming year $30,000. And then we do have an aging history, which has been supplied to you to give you about four or five years worth of history. Just like you budget, we budget based on past expenditures, plus anything that we may expect this one to occur.
But other than Dale, that is a history. Went back to sort of got to the staff chart of what you paid in and legal fees arriving out of my favor.
We did, and when I put the budget together, because we're in a receivership situation, I just assumed there could possibly be some added expenses from the legal side. So we increased it just a little bit for that reason. But like any other public budget, any unexpended funds are returned to the authority.
Dale, is it safe to say that because you're in receivership, you still have to do a budget with the anticipation and believe that you may get a board back and come out of receivership?
That is correct, Commissioner. Not only is that correct, but we really are bound to do that legally. Currently, you are basically sitting in place of the authority. And until it goes through a decertification process, we have to abide by the same policies and practices that we have historically done. So we have it on both sides.
That provides some information. However, the bottom line is Fred Coperline going to be paid $750 a month when he acts at the discretion of the board. And there is no board. You guys are the ones.
The, obviously, the attorney for the authority is Fred Coperline. Mr. Coperline has a continuing services contract with the authority. He will remain the attorney for the authority. In his contract, he has a $750 monthly retainer. This is not the first time that Ms. Limbly and others have expressed concern about it. It is a contract that was approved and entered into before my tenure. I do not know exactly what the discussion was amongst the authority members at the time when they entered into that agreement. I have heard the explanations when these questions have come up before in authority meetings. But it is a valid contract. It is a requirement. I have never found any provision anywhere that says that that's inappropriate or was inappropriate for the authority at the time they entered into the agreement to not include a provision like that. So it was approved, it's in good standing, it will be paid until such time as a change in contract occurs or the authority is to serve.
What Dale said, is that there is a contract. However, if you've ever hired an attorney, you can ask Foreman. You know, you put down a retainer, it usually buys them. I got a divorce, had to give the guy $5,000. When it got down to a point, you had to give more money. But this contract, he gets $750 a month. It never goes down if it's not his services. I think it's wrong. And Dale was not there. The reason this was initiated, Jack Berry had left, and Coperline told the board he needed that money to field questions from the authority board members. And I just think it's not the right thing to do. Gets paid for doing nothing because he asked this question at the hall.
Okay, thank you. You want questions from Mr. Williams?
Carl, do we have anyone?
No one.
If we have no one, Mr. Chair, that is willing to ask a question online. So if it's your prerogative, we will move on with new business.
Yes.
Okay. Specifically, and again, I'm here to ask you as a receiver for the authority to adopt an operating budget for the hospital authority. And just some brief history here, just to kind of keep things in perspective. Our budget at the authority has five funds. Haven't looked at your budget lately, but I would imagine you're close to 20, 15 or 20, somewhere in there. So we have five, and we're going to talk about those and what each fund does. And I promise to be as brief as I can. The statute that we adopt the budget by is 18906, sub-paragraph three. It basically has the requirements for how many days prior you have to advertise, how long you have to post your budget, and et cetera. In our particular case, there is no village levy. Just where you will know, when the DR 420s first came out for this fiscal year, we did not have a quorum. So as the executive director, I certified what was last year's mid-village, which was one ten-thousandths of a mill. When it became time to certify the final village, we did not have a quorum. So my legal opinion was is that we could only basically certify. We did not levy a mill, which is correct. So do not expect for the authority to be an even listed taxing authority on the next bill. We were the past year because we levied the one ten-thousandths of a mill. But we should not even be on the bill for the coming year. I'm just giving you the reason why. We do not have the village levy, therefore, TRIM laws, TRIF and mill laws do not apply. And I personally called the Department of Revenue because there's a couple of firsts here for me. One is I've got 32 years of direct experience in public administration dealing with public budgets, and another six years beyond that. I've never presented a budget anywhere where a public hearing was not required, and TRIM laws do not apply. So it was new territory for me. So I called, I got an understanding. I wasn't quite sure that I understood what I heard. So I did ask Richard Powell to call behind me, and he did. And he come up with the same interpretation of what we were told. So we're trying to make sure that we dot every i across every t, but it is new material and a new process for all of us. I've never presented to a receiver, never in 38 years presented a public budget. We didn't have to have certain things. We don't have a village, TRIM laws don't apply. I mentioned earlier about 18906 says, okay, you got to post this stuff two days prior to adoption. You have to adopt it by resolution. And may have to post it on the website 45 days after adoption. So we're going to do that. Now, I think this is important. Our resolution does not include reserves. It includes appropriations only. So if you would like, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like to write this number down, as of September 30th of this year, the Lake Shore Hospital Authority had on cash $22,192,996.68. So because we don't have village, we no longer have lease income because we lost our tenant. The budgets that I'm about to present to you are going to be funded using those cash reserves and whatever interest is expected to be generated from those cash reserves. And as you'll see when we get into the revenue side of these budgets, much like you do not receive a lot of revenue from interest from your investments, neither does the authority. I think most of that money is generating about, boy, it's a quarter of a percent. The good news is, is most of those investments are short-term. They're 18 months or shorter. That's kind of a two-edged sword. One, if we got a really good rate, we're going to have a longer period of time. But the lending institutions don't want to give you much more than that because the rates have been volatile as far as going down. So we're limited where we can invest the money, just as you are. And we're not generating extreme amounts of interest. For the most part, our average rate for our CDs and investments is about one quarter of a percent. That's where it's at. Okay, this was the letter that I sent, David. And I think everything in that letter I just covered. But if you have any specific questions, I would be glad to answer them as we move into the actual budgets themselves. First budget that I would like to present to you, the first fund, is the hospital operating fund. Would you like all of this a central budget, but it's as close to a central budget as you're going to get with the authority? This is where all the office expenses are paid. This is where the cost of the actual administration building that we're in is paid, roaming, et cetera. You will notice that the way this budget was funded is we put in $65,000 in expected interest revenues. The balance is going to be funded from the actual cash reserves. And the total budget is going to be, for this fund, $394,410. I will point out, because people always ask for their budgets, the staff of the authority consists of two full-time employees and one part-time. As the executive director, I am the part-time employee. My contract is an hourly contract. I cannot exceed 28 hours a week. And I've been the director for a little over three years, and I have never billed for 28 hours.
Dale, excuse me, Dale, could you hold on just a minute? Mr. Black, did you have a seat, please?
Yeah, I'm trying to put in the call.
You need to get your own time if you're going to do that. Please have a seat. You're interrupting the mission committee.
Oh, you're outside.
Please have a seat. Go ahead, Dale.
But anyway, I wanted to mention, the two employees do not have a health benefit such as we do not provide medical coverage directly for them. We attempted to do that, so has the prior administration. We just can't get favorable rates for a group that's small. So their salaries were increased, again, before my time in order to sort of compensate for that. Other than that, they get standard benefits. They get, they're members of FRS. They're both in the regular retirement class. They get their match on their social security. I think our holiday schedule is exactly the same as the county's. As far as I am, I'm straight hourly. They do have to pay on me because of FRS requirements. There's a special class of FRS. I retired from the county. I get a retirement from FRS. I cannot re-enter FRS, but they still charge the authority. That was the smallest of those accounts just because I work for an FRS employer. We tried to eliminate that. And though it's not really a lot of money, it's money that you prefer not to spend, particularly if nobody's going to benefit from it directly. So that's basically the staffing, and that's my arrangement. If you have any questions about this fund, I'll be glad to answer them. The next fund, Mr. Chairman, is the hospital services fund. This is the fund that we would use when services were provided at Lake Shore. They billed us for the clients that we had. We would pay them from this. We also had some on-call doctors who would actually do patient visits for our clients while they were in the hospital. Now, obviously, we have no hospital CHS group. We will be paying any contractual obligations we have with the medical center of this fund. And so for the coming year, we figured we would put a couple of hundred thousand dollars in this fund. I would be surprised that we would spend that, to be perfectly honest. But just in case, we did put it in. Now, when CHS and other providers were operating the hospital, there were years that their billings could be as much as $70,000, $80,000 a month. It hasn't been that way in a few years. But if you're looking for a range back in the peak, when the Lake Shore Hospital was fully operational as a hospital, they were billing the maximum amount they could to your party. It could easily, those bills were easily $70,000, $80,000 a month, three of the more. In fact, I think they were, for one year there, a million and a half dollars was paid to the hospital. That has not been the case in the last three, four years. It used to be that way. Okay?
Dale, how many clients is enrolled currently?
About 90 right now, about 90. And I think at its peak, it was 400 plus. I think at the peak, it was 400 plus. It's never been that number since I've been there. In the three years I've been there, I want to think the maximum we had was maybe 140. And now it's down to 90.
Is there any continuing contracts there with any of the local clinics or what have you, other than hospitals?
Yes, sir. And that's this actual fund we're talking about, Commissioner.
Okay.
We still have primary care clinical contracts. We have like four or five different dividers. And we still, of course, send our clients to them. We also pay for pharmaceuticals that we supply out of. I would like to clarify, there is a specific list of drugs that the authority will pay. They won't just pay for anything. They have made some modifications to that program. The idea being if one of our patients goes to the doctor, that doctor writes that patient a prescription. We don't want to have to wait three weeks in order to get one of our programs, like Needy Men's, to ship medicine for them because that three weeks could be critical to that patient. So we made some provisions where at least you could get a very short-term amount of medication when needed, if it was on our list, to that patient as quick as possible, to one client as quick as possible. But the pharmacy is paid out of the clinical services fund as well as a third-party primary care.
Dale, the individual care, go back to your right-hand side. Do you hear me? There we have just the reversion and then the individual care.
Yes.
Above the other.
Other expenses?
Yeah.
Actually, I want to think that what that other expenses were in those years that you see there, it ended up being some type of equipment, if I remember the schedule correctly. But by the way, I will point out, if you'll notice that one year says all of them is based on the fiscal year, but the third column, the authority uses a standard off-the-accounting quick book system. I'd love to have a customized accounting system like you have. I really would. But they're expensive. We couldn't justify paying that for operations small as the authority. And when we went to pull these prior years, for whatever reason, that year that would have ended September 30th of '20, 2020, I can only pull it through July. I don't know what happened to the other months. I couldn't figure it out, so. The rest of them are based on this one year. That one's a little short. But what we do, Commissioner, is we have qualification standards. An individual comes in, those standards are applied to their individual situation. If they qualify, they pick from our list of providers, a primary care doctor. If they require hospitalization, they go to an approved Lake Shore Hospital Authority facility, which is now the medical center. It's new Lake Shore at Chan's. And when those services aren't provided, that hospital reimburs that the Medicaid rate. And that holds true for the medical center as well as it did for the exchange. Did that help you, Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
The capital services fund is several trustee boards ago. Maybe even Mr. Murphy was there then. What they did is, needless to say, they're a taxing authority. So they levied a tax which was actually paid by their tenant. That was in the hospital. So the money that came from that tenant, several years ago, the authority board decided, hey, you know, we don't want to profit off of our tenant. So they would take the money that was collected off the village levy and they put it into a capital services fund. And that money was used exclusively to pay for things back at the hospital. So CHS was there. I think all taxing authorities, they paid for tangible personal property, adware, the whole tax thing, maybe $300,000. What portion of that came back to the authority? And in this account, they didn't just put it into reserves. They put it in a special fund, and they reinvested it into the hospital. Because we don't have any village levy now, we obviously zeroed this fund down. So when you see total expense, you don't see an appropriation. But that's the reason they had that fund. And when I came along, I thought that was a pretty fair and reasonable thing to do. So I certainly supported keeping that. This is the one that gets all the discussion. This is the hospital building fund. This budget was created when CHS announced that it was leaving. At that time, the authority board created a budget not to exceed one and a half million dollars annually, the purpose of which was to keep the hospital in an occupable state in hopes that we could find another medical provider to enter into a lease. Obviously, we've now gone one year. We have not been able to secure anyone to go into a lease. And just about the time we lost a quorum on the board, we were about to present options where we could move from looking for hospital providers to other types of medical care that could potentially use that campus. And at some point, I've got to discuss with you, Mr. Chairman, and your manager, when I can come back and bring you all up to speed on that whole process, what we've done to date, what we believe our next date, what we believe our next steps are. But if there is a goal of the authority, this should be our goal, and that is to get tenants in those buildings and eliminate this fund. That is our goal. That's exactly what we want. But we did budget for an entire year. It's nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand. We never did spend a million and a half, but we did spend a lot of money. You can see through the budget that we maintain it. We cut grass. We have security on the building. We run all of the HDAC systems. Now, the truth is, is that every line item there is either the same as it was when the hospital's occupied, or lower, with the exception of one, and that's insurance. Vacant building, the insurance went sky high. It costs more property coverage to insure a vacant building than it does an occupied building. But other than that, every line item is, well, that were utilities. They're much lower than they were when the building was stabbed and had people in it. But there are some fixed costs, too. We pay the same today to have the yard's note as we did when there was people in the hospital. We pay the same for security. So, there are fixed costs, but all line items are the same or lower than they were when it was an occupied building, with the exception of insurance. This is our target. This is what you will hear me when I get a chance to speak to you about ongoing issues for the authority and the buildings. This is the budget that we're going to be trying to attack. Now, having said that, I would ask this board, if you were to look at all those expenses I just ran to you, they total one million, six hundred thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars. So, we are asking, or I'm asking in behalf of Lake Shore Hospital Authority, if the board would adopt Resolution Number two thousand twenty-one R forty-seven. It says, whereas the Columbia County Board of County Commissioners, acting as a court appointed receiver, has tentatively adopted a twenty-one, twenty-two appropriations budget of a million, six hundred thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and twenty for Lake Shore Hospital Authority, now therefore be it resolved by the Columbia County Board of County Commissioners, acting as a court appointed receiver, adopt the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two appropriations budget in the amount of one million, six thirty-eight, four twenty. So, you have both the tenanted budget that you had, and you have the adopted budget that's being presented in one resolution. So, if a motion due is made, the signatory is for the chairman to call.
Mr. Chairman? I'm moving that down to Resolution Number two, zero, two, one, R, G, twenty-seven.
Second. I got a motion and a second, or are you in a discussion on this? We have a card? Come on.
First, when the authority had the maximum amount of people, it was over a thousand clients, there was no paid manager. Two freeways did it all by herself. It wasn't needed. We didn't need to pay a manager a thousand dollars a month, a thousand dollars a week in order to do something that somebody could do and didn't charge at all. The hospital authority only for a very brief time charged the Medicare rate. The rate that the hospital authority reimbursed until Lake City Medical Center, and I don't even know if that contract was ever executed. So, if you don't have a contract, then aren't you a provider? They never paid the Medicare rate. They paid some pocket maybe formula that nobody could figure out, even experts. Number three, Mr. Williams just said he represents the hospital authority board. He doesn't represent the hospital authority board. The hospital authority doesn't have a board. Hospital authority stopped having a board, not when Dr. Thompson left, but when Shands went out of business. If you listen to what Mr. Foreman said, and I was hoping to have the minutes of that meeting, but we didn't get them yet, I don't think, is that the statute is clear, is that when, that when it was, when the hospital authority legislation was approved, it said a member must be on the staff of Shands at Lake Shore Hospital. You have nobody on Shands at Lake Shore Hospital, Mr. Hollingsworth, and there hasn't been anybody there for quite some time. The other thing is, so I don't even know how you have the authority to do that. The other thing is, when this thing went in front of Judge Feeney, I'd like to know why, if listening to Mr. Foreman, that this is going to be a case of first impression, that nobody's done anything like this before, that this board didn't even think to have a court reporter, they didn't get a transcript. That's just amateur stuff. There's no record of Mr. Foreman and Mr. Colton Line, or Joe Fed Form Line, as I call him, ever appearing in front of the judge, other than, I know it's funny, other than the order that they both signed. And that order clearly is questionable. Somebody needs to intervene in that case. But I just leave you with this, and I thank you for the extra time, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Williams does not represent the hospital authority or its board because technically there is no hospital authority and there is no board. And that's something that the clerk should be thinking about when he starts writing checks. And I will tell you, as they leave the microphone, that the clerk and I already had this discussion. So, I would say tread lightly. You guys are in uncharted territory, as Mr. Foreman said, but Mr. Foreman made it clear, made sure, and the Lake Shore Hospital Authority attorney, that there was no record. So, that's it. Thank you very much. I would oppose to this. I don't think you have the legal authority to do this right now. And I guess this has to be approved by the court, is that right, Mr. Chairman? Now that you're in receivership? Is this, now it has to be approved by the judge? I mean, Mr. Foreman said everything has to be approved by the judge, so I don't know.
Still, I will resort to any legal questions to our turn.
Okay, so does he get answered?
That's up to him.
Okay.
But I would ask you to ask all your questions, and then I will see if you will address, if you ever want to address.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Williams, you like to address any of that?
I will add a little commentary. One, as far as the authority, I would respectfully disagree with Mr. Rupert. The authority is the authority until such time as it's decertified. That's my understanding from Tallahassee down. If I said I represented the board, that was on me. But I do represent the authority. And the authority will remain an authority until such time as it's decertified. That's number one. Number two, I don't know how many clients the authority had back in Sioux, was really important. I personally know Sioux, and Sioux's an excellent person. And I know that she had a, she had an instrumental effect on a lot of the things, and she did a great job from everything I've been told. But I will say this, that then, there really was no billing for services at all. What happened was, the authority's billing was divided into four quarterly payments and simply remanded back. That made, that process stayed in place for a number of years until the State Auditor General got involved and said that was an illegal payment. And at some point, again, before my time, that's when the authority board started making the changes toward the system that we have today. So, there is some transition that went on, though I wasn't present, and explains part of that. So, I disagree. I do believe that I represent the authority. I have no reason not to believe it. I have every reason to believe that when you adopt this budget as a receiver, because this is nothing new, different, or changed in any way to what the hospital authority's previously done, that this becomes an authorized budget. Now, if you're going to make changes in some of these funds, or if you're going to add services, or you're going to delete things, I do think those have to go back to the board. And I'm basing all of what I'm telling you on what I've been told through various legal channels, various financial channels, trying to understand this myself, because I will repeat, in my thirty-eight years, all the public budgets out now, I've never presented one to a receiver. I've never presented one that didn't have to comply with TRIB requirements. And I'm trying to understand it as much as you are, so. Having said that, I would still ask that the board approve the resolution.
Here's my motion, that's second.
Well, I also want to ask anybody to take it, thank you, Senator. Go ahead. Make it, make it quick, please.
Since this is uncharted territory, would it not be a good idea to have the board attorney for the county ask for an AGO opinion about the status of the board and make an expedited opinion, since this is uncharted territory? The board can't ask our attorney to do it because we don't have a board. So, I would like Attorney Foreman, on behalf of the commission, on behalf of the authority, to ask for an expedited AGO opinion to see if the board is a board or not a board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Question asked, question answered. I don't think anybody's arguing we don't have a board.
I don't either. I think it's purely, the authority, I think, reported by the judge. Thank you, Mr. Williams.
You're not alone.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All the papers.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, first of all, thank you, and I appreciate again the help from county staff and helping us do, get through these things. Mr. Chairman, we, as the authority, now need you to come by if you're at convenience. We have some invoices that you need to sign. And also, I need to schedule with this board an opportunity to bring everybody up to speed as to where we're at, what we've done, what we're trying to do next, ask you what your suggestions are, how to get us back where we can come up with a plan of action and work forward.
Mr. Williams, is this something you would want to do in a regular meeting, or you want to do a workshop for it?
I'm going to defer to the board. At least the initial meeting is probably going to take a little time, just because we're going to talk about.
So, let's schedule a workshop for that. Do y'all have any special plans?
I would make it a special meeting, and I would submit a vote, and I'd like to workshop.
Special meeting?
Yeah.
I'm kind of good with that. So, what name, sir?
David.
Yes.
How quickly do you want to do it, in the next couple of weeks, or do you want to do it?
It's basically the year, the year lacking.
Yeah, I'd like to do it sometime in the first of November.
All right.
My thing, I think, November.
I would say probably the second week of November. The first week, you got your board meeting on the fourth, so I would recommend sometime between the eighth and the twelfth.
Well, works for you. Good day. I'm good, I'm pretty much.
Oh, the eleventh is Veterans Day, so you wouldn't want to do it on the eleventh.
Dale, I'll be glad to coordinate with you, as long as we have the.
November twelfth, or?
Times to do appropriate advertising, I think we're good.
The twelfth is too. I'd say the tenth or the ninth would probably be best.
Let's do the tenth, I mean, the tenth.
Do you want it here on the day or at night?
I would, yeah. Here, day. Nine o'clock. Nine o'clock on the day, how about that?
Then we'll check the availability in the building and get back to everybody involved.
Okay, did we need to do any kind of motion or anything on that?
Can't hurt.
Okay, can I get a motion to do a special meeting for the, you know, Lake Shore Hospital Board?
So, maybe.
Second, check. Got a motion in the second, all the papers?
David, if the building's not available, I would assume we'd probably have it over there at the hospital authorities.
I would assume that the hospital authority would be amenable to that.
And I want to extend an invitation to you. I know that Commissioner Murphy, well aware of them, but any of y'all that would like to come over and tour the hospital or the ancillary buildings, please feel free to come. We'll be glad to give you the tour. And we'll be talking about those when we meet. So, if you'd like some historical knowledge of them or whatever, any time between now and then, we'll make it work, so. Like for you to come by and look. Okay?
Sounds good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman? Real quick, can I ask for a quick five-minute recess when Carl packs up his stuff?
Send him to you. Got me, bud. Okay, we got five minutes.
If these guys recharge now, there's no hospital authority for it, and I have to be, these guys will come on and tap.
Work.
That workshop, this is like Christmas without a tree.
I go there, and I go all up the court, and I am very, you gotta talk, yeah. You literally, you gotta talk, work, see what it is, no meat, no cheese, no, nobody knows about it. The county attorney fires the long side, damn, nobody, you're going to stay on?
And it costs for me for a thing or eleven, I like the one posted on nine.
You don't need, you don't need, you don't need to try me.
But I don't think, look, you're on one grand. You have some ground, you gotta stay, you gotta, you gotta try to see what mother do it for me. Comes here with a joint of emotions, and they charge them. They don't even know. How is that right? How is that?
People, huh? And that, you know.
Yeah.
See, you get more than they see.
Pop for work.
This is made by what?
Thank you.
First, the, okay?
I don't know, so many.
I've got to make a difference to get this paid.
I don't care about what happens to the judge.
Judge.
What did he, what did, what did John break?
I do care about this. And the reason I do is I don't think they should be. Yeah, it's okay. Yeah, damn.
Excellent. Okay, so who had a meeting? Ms. Williams, you make a motion for the consent agenda, please?
Yes. All right, okay.
I, uh, determine I move we approve of the agenda.
Got a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
I move we adopt the agenda.
Second. Got a motion and a second for adoption, send it in, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, uh, Mr. Kirby.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I have three items for your consideration, Swan. The first one is, uh, down on the Itchten River, FDOT, Swan County are basically going to be responsible for the construction. And they're asking us to take perpetual operation, maintenance, construction. This will tie our bike trail across the Itchten River. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm requesting a motion to approve and execute the TRIB agreement with FDOT and Swan County for the extension of the Swan River Green Bay Trail Resolution Number Twenty Twenty-One R Forty-Five.
This is my district, uh, what we're proposing to do is where the bridge is now, the trail stops at the river and they have to bicycle across the, uh, the bridge with the traffic. And they're going to use the old rubber bridge for, uh, for the bridge for the trail. This is, uh, we'll be with, working with Swan County on this project or, or this paper. It'll tie, tie me and Swan County together without them having to get on the twenty-seventh. Uh, I'll make a motion to approve this.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, sir. Uh, the second item is Simmons Shiller Tower Repair. Uh, obviously we have to keep our trailers going. Ninety thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three dollars. Simmons currently holds the maintenance contract with us. If they do repair this, they're responsible for continued maintenance of the towers. So therefore we're looking for a motion to approve Simmons Industry, Inc. to perform the repairs in amount of ninety thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three dollars.
So many. Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
All right, thank you. The final item is at the courthouse elevator repairs, Otis Elevator Company, fifty-three thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Once again, they currently hold maintenance contract with us. If they want repairs, they do take responsibility. We're asking for a motion to approve Otis Elevator Company to perform the repairs to courthouse elevator in amount of fifty-three, five, fifty-eight.
So. So got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Kirby.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So the first thing, um, the list is a new project we're in named Southwest Mosley Court. Basically, um, Mosley Court is in Eastmit currently. It services ten properties. They need to get some nine-one-one addresses so they can have emergency response, ambulance, fire, sheriff's department. Right now they don't have nine-one-one addresses. Your ordinance or your policy that you adopted previously says, if it's so many feet, so many residences, you have to go out and get signatures. We haven't got signatures. Nine of the ten parcels signed, one parcel did not sign. They didn't say hello, they just, for whatever reason, didn't sign. Because of the urgency of the public safety nature, because we need the nine-one-one addresses, we're recommending that the board name the Eastmit Southwest Mosley Court so we can add it to our nine-one-one addressing system.
David, my question for this, and this is my district, but, uh, I know these lots have been busted up for years. I mean, they go back, so probably the same. Uh, would this be a private road or just an east?
It would be a private road. It would become a private road.
Now, do they have to form any kind of association?
No.
Okay. All right, uh, I'll make a motion, we approve motion, so remember who names yourself with.
So many.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor? Any votes?
So the next item we have is our fiber optic lease renewal with Comcast Enterprise Services. Uh, they're our current provider. Uh, they provide all of our backbone connectivity from courthouse to the sheriff's office, to nine-one-one stations, the public work yard, pretty much any place if we don't use microwave link and we use actual fiber optic cable, they provide the broadband connectivity, they provide the tight. So the lease is about to expire, so, um, our IT department went out and swapped three quotes. AT&T did not respond, but Hardgrade Fiber did and Comcast responded. Hardgrade came in with a good number and including in their number, they increased our bandwidth. Comcast did the same thing, came in with a lower number than what we're currently paying and significantly increased our pipe. It definitely increased our bandwidth, um, that we currently have. So our recommendation would be to go with our current provider so we don't have changeover costs and everything else. And the additional, for a lower price, and the additional four thousand, nine hundred percent increase in bandwidth. As you remember, previously we had discussions of having bandwidth issues between like nine-one-one center and courthouse or Jalen courthouse. This should go a long way towards helping that because they're going to expand our bandwidth and give us additional capabilities. So we recommend renewing the Comcast Enterprise Services.
So move.
Thanks.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
The next item, Resolution Number Twenty Twenty-One R Forty-Six, changing the date of the November eighteenth regular meeting. In a nutshell, uh, the majority of this board plans to attend the Florida Association of Counties Legislative Meeting. Uh, it will be out of town the week of November eighteenth, so therefore there would not have been a formal. As such, um, we are recommending moving the meeting to November twenty-third, which is the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. It would be a night meeting so that you could have public hearings because there are several public hearings that we need to have held. And so we're asking the board to adopt Resolution Number Twenty Twenty-One R Forty-Six, which would change the second regular meeting in November to November twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one, beginning at five thirty P M. In this building.
So move. Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
The next one is a contract amendment for Paradise Advertising. If you remember, last year we hired Paradise Advertising for the T D C. They're doing our rebranding, they're doing our media sales, they're doing our website, our social media ties. This basically is amending the contract that fits current fiscal year and reflect the services that they'll provide this fiscal year at three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Remove. Second. Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
The next one is economic development incentive project number twenty-one dash one. This is a confidential project. We, um, so we can't go into too much detail or explain it. Uh, they are in the process of acquiring a site. And, uh, very much are interested in relocating here or locating here and expanding. Uh, they are requesting a seventy-five percent tax rebate for eight years on the county's portion of the overall, of the overall military cessna piece of property. They went through the Economic Development Advisory Board. Economic Development Advisory Board unanimously recommended this incentive package at their regular meeting on October sixth. This project take up approximately fifty acres. It brings in thirty-six million dollars of capital investment. Will create twenty-five year-round jobs with an average annual wage of ninety-five thousand dollars an ear. It has seasonal activity. Uh, so it's such a during seasonal peak of this activity, they could bring as many three thousand more people during the seasonal work. We feel this is a significant contribution to our local economy and request that we adopt, you know, incentive for project number twenty-one.
Second. Got a motion and a second, I have a comment card on this. Mr. Looker, would you come up, please?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I just have one question. I understand all this is on the slide, which was not available yesterday. And there's no backup information material in the agenda? And I sent a text to the county manager. I was doing my stuff, I was at one o'clock this morning and you and, and Mr. Hunter, I guess he's there, someone. Uh, why isn't there any backup material on this? You guys just come in here and prove this stuff and.
Because of confidentiality, uh.
All this stuff could have been in the backup.
That is all the information that was released with the look. That's all the backup material there is right there.
But it's not on the agenda, it's not with the stuff. So nobody knew about it until this morning.
Mr. Looker, you caused us to lose one company that left here because you figured out who to work and, and stated their name in the paper and they got pissed about it and left Columbia County. And we going to make sure this don't happen again.
So if that's, I'm just, Mr. Chairman, if I just, I don't want to use up all my time with this. It's just either, either this board believes in putting the backup material with the information that goes to the public or it doesn't. I understand Commissioner Williams' concerns. However, this board is either going to be a lawful board or it's not. You're going to fly like we do unfortunately in Lake City now, where you're going to continue to do what you're used to doing in the past and put everything with the agendas. And I just, it's not there. The slide could have been there. The attorney is clearly capable of redacting information that he feels is redactable and unavailable to the public. But the public had nothing this morning when you're going ahead and proving tax rebate in seven years. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Um, and maybe this is a question for our county attorney. We approved this much, this, this, uh, resolution today. This, this goes back to the company in the form of a contract. There'll be a future contract coming forth at that time, I assume, and they won't be confidential at that time. And that contract will come back before this board. And at that time, you can disclose who they are and exactly all the details, but at this time, we're not there. We're just approving to allow this to move forward so we can get this company and maintain their confidentiality, which is all we have to do. So this is not the last bite, it's after, there will be a time when all this is disclosed and we'll have to vote on a final contract, I assume.
Yes.
Same way it's always been.
And al- and also general information we need here this year, how many jobs they're going, they're going to do, what they're asking for, you know? I think we, we have, and, and I mentioned, we have a, make it, uh, economic development board that approves your debt. So at some point we have to put a little bit of, of, uh, paid it to our board, our, we have to do this stuff, so. But, uh, like Commissioner, uh, we had said, this is going to come back before us for a final approval.
Mr. Chairman, I address Commissioner Whit's point. So you do have the narrative in the agenda item request form. Is there all this information is in the agenda on the, uh, nature and purpose of agenda items? See, we've got that. Um, I would caution the board, if you adopt the Economic Development Advisor Board's recommendation here, based on my understanding, the, the company is going to conduct its evaluation based on that prompt from you. And, uh, there is a justifiable reliance basis for filing suit against counties. There's not against cities, but there is against counties. So if you do approve it, although you will ultimately see the agreement, this part of it will already have been approved and you won't have a lot of opportunity to debase. I just, I don't want the board to have.
But what they're, every time they're, remember, John was called, they have to.
Correct, as long as it's consistent with these terms that are on the, uh, agenda item request form. And, and if you approve it, then we would expect all of that to be included.
Sorry, any deviation off of this resolution force suspend your back end draft.
Then that's correct, maybe a reading of shifts. I was just, I was more speaking to the confidentiality because he's asking for backup material and, and, you know, at, at, at a future time, this won't be confidential and all the details in this will be there. And if something is all from what they originally promised, you know, we can address it, but correct.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, all in favor? Any votes? Okay, David.
The next item is the COVID nineteen leave policy at the last board meeting. The board rejected the policy that was submitted and said come back with a different policy based on what the board's comments were. We're going back to you and revise policy. Post policy that we have before you today provides up to eighty additional hours of sick leave for all employees. Did not completely utilize the federally mandated COVID nineteen leave during the declared state of emergency. A little bit different for firefighters and telecommunications because their standard week is not a forty-hour week, which is traditionally what we do with leave for firefighters and telecommunists. It also addresses those employees in the library that were actually put out of work for a month. So they had to do eighty hours of personal leave. In addition to the eighty hours of COVID leave, this would restore those eighty hours of personal. And the reason we say up to is if they use some of it, didn't use all of it, we would prorate it so that they would get the total of the eighty hours of federal government mandate. Uh, right now it is, as written, to go to sick leave. There was some discussion amongst the board whether it should be sick or vacation. A third option would be to allow the employee to make the determination if they would like to leave to be sick for vacation. And whatever the board's preferences.
Just speaking of this. So right now with this motion, it's just sick.
Ways for any sick leave unless the board amends it to, uh, either go get to vacation or to give the employee the option.
I've said this before, I don't think we can tell them what kind of leave because it didn't matter with the other eighty hours that people took before the governor mandated. It, I just think that we're limiting them to something that the other people didn't get limited to. In my opinion, it should be their choice and it makes everybody whole, it's just my opinion. Why don't you make a motion?
Make a motion.
Okay, I move that we amend it to say that the employee can use whatever leave he deems necessary for the, you know, for the two.
Sick leave or vacation.
Yeah, sick leave or vacation, yeah.
Second. Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? All right, let's move on to number ten.
And then finally, on Eagles Wings. Uh, when you adopted your budget, you, uh, approved thirty-four thousand dollars for the On Eagles Wings project as part of the budget. And when you did that, you specifically stated that it was continued upon having an audit before we would issue the contract or provide funds to On Eagles Wings. Our contract with On Eagles Wings is not actually with On Eagles Wings. It's a three-party agreement with On Eagles Wings and Career Source Florida. Basically, we pay Career Source Florida. Basically, we pay Career Source Florida, who oversees the project. They get all the bills, they make sure all the expenditures are correct, they provide us then documentation and financials, which is in the form of profit and loss. And this contract has been structured for a long time. Career Source Florida Crown came to us and said they've got expenditures going on. This program, thirty-four thousand dollars, is too small to be able to afford an audit. And I don't want to speak to them, they're here today, as well as On Eagles Wings, but that, there's really not enough money to provide an audit, and they're requesting that I waive the audit requirement so that we can continue to program.
So David, you said this is with Florida Crown?
Yeah. It's a three-party agreement, and On Eagles Wings, Florida Crown, and us. We pay on Florida Crown. And Florida Crown oversees On Eagles Wings, oversees their expenditures, supports, gives us, and we pay Florida Crown.
So Florida Crown is an audited organization who oversees the financials of On Eagles Wings, and they've turned their financials over to Florida Crown, and Florida Crown is happy with that, so we should defer, I think.
Is this on the, is this their expenditures on Eagles Wing included in their audit distinct?
What we get from them, and we've got a copy of the ones we just recently got, we get a profit and loss statement from Florida Crown that says this is what they spent.
But not all of this?
It's not an audit statement.
Okay, just to give the board history, myself and Brown was here in eighteen, and when Eagle, when the group come, and we supported it because of the cut, the cut funds that Tallahassee sent, they did away with funding this program. That's why they came to this board back in eighteen. And we funded it that year, and with the understanding that if there's gonna be a continuation, they can bring us an audit. That was in eighteen. Nineteen, I made the same statement in here and agreed to it again. I would not agree to it again. I personally, Richard Powell reached out to me yesterday, asking me as a commissioner, what am I looking for? I'm just simply looking for an audit in regards to when a constituent comes to me, how is your tax dollars being spent? That P and L, anybody can create that. I'm not saying they're being falsified or nothing like that, I don't allude to that whatsoever, but we've already, this board, this board already made the, we've already made a motion on five oh one C threes, and anybody that we give money to is gonna present an audit. They should be no different. This is taxpayers' dollars, in my opinion.
Well, if, if, if everybody, if we request an audit, everybody that we give money to, that's you, or anybody get any money, I want to say a home on the way to my next meeting.
And we've already voted on that.
From, 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 from Merida on down.
Very...
Twenty-balance electric, I mean, twenty-balance, uh, uh, transit, or anybody else.
I agree. I agree, and we've already voted on that.
But I just see this as different because it's a sub, it's a subgroup of Florida Crown. And Florida Crown is a group that provides us with an audit, correct?
Yep.
So, I mean...
My question then to the gentleman is Eagles Wings, all expenditures exposed in your Florida Crown audit?
Not specifically, but when we're getting audited by James Moore Company, they do look at the contracts that we have, and they also look at how we expend those dollars. What we do, basically, we, with agreement with, with this county and with On Eagles Wings, let me just go back and give you just a little bit of history regards what happened. Initially, back about fourteen, fifteen years ago, Ms. Brown was looking to start transitional housing that gave to us, and the prior ED wrote up her right of grand department correction. And because, so those funds coming down from the state, they needed an agency that they could send those dollars through to Ms. Brown, which was pretty definitely would be the pastor agency for On Eagles Wings so that they could receive funding through the state of Florida Department of Correction. And what we would do is write a check to Ms. Brown on Eagles Wings so she could cover her expenditures, and then we would get reimbursed through the state. Back about two thousand and nineteen, as we know, the Department of Correction at that point stopped funding any transitional housing. It was a year that they lost their insurance coverage for their correctional officers and staff. And when they went out and got a new insurance carrier, their insurance carrier's dollar cost was more than what they were expecting, so they pulled the money from transitional housing and put that into the funding for the insurance coverage for the state employees. That's when On Eagles Wings lost their funding. And so that's when we came before the board asking for your assistance because the, On Eagles Wings is a very organization that helps for a few individuals coming out of the prison system and transitioning back into the community. They recented a building that has been cut about zero percent when Ms. Brown Wesley goes into prison, so that's one of the reasons why we're still here, hoping to get funding for her. Now, we checked with, as you said, Richard Powell called in, we checked with Paula Jones, and we talked to Mr. Powell about doing an audit. He, he informed us that it would be between four to five thousand dollars to do an audit specifically on Eagles Wings. She does not have that kind of fund. We, as an agency, cannot give that kind of fund because we would have to, it would be disallowed cost because our fund is basically for, for our constituents in the different programs funded down through the Department of Labor. So that's why she has not been able to get an audit. It would be impossible for her to pay forty-five thousand dollars on audit when, basically, you're talking about, she operates on approximately thirty-four, the forty thousand dollars a year. The fund is not there.
Any questions? I have one more favor to speak on this. Just look if you have anything else. Go ahead, go ahead, man.
I just want to add too that this is the first year that we've been requested to have an audit since we've been doing On Eagles Wings. We didn't need an audit back in twenty-eighteen. This is the first year that we've been requested to have one. We will get an audit, like Robert was saying, the money for us is not there. We do not mind an audit. We have served our community and serve our released defendants, and we've done excellently well with these defendants. The ones that we serve that they're coming out of prison, don't have any place to go, they're considered homeless, and they walk out the gates, and the released officers call me, ask for housing, we bring them in. These men go through the community, we get them, we help them with jobs, they come into Career Source, and they get, they get jobs, and maybe work out at the mobile plant, and they, they learn to support themselves. Since COVID, we now have four participants. We were housing eight to twelve participants, but since COVID, those that transitioned out of our home back to the community have their own places, they're our successors, they have not returned back to prison. And we have several of the young men that are married now with families of their own. They go out to Christ Central, they go to church. We have a couple of them in the home now that goes to church. So the men that come in have the opportunity to get themselves together, not reciprocate. And I think in our community, that says a lot. So we don't have them coming out and then just going, you know, returning back to jail, returning back to prison. So we, you know, we do very well in our community working with released defendants.
David, y'all, do you do your votes, like quick votes, or how do you keep a record?
Um, it's not QuickBooks, it's a program that I use. I can't think of the name of it right now, but it's not QuickBooks, but it's like QuickBooks.
David, did they turn in and spend any kind of high-age statement to the county?
Yes, they did. I have copies if anybody would like to see them. Since the last, one I had copies of is most recent.
So have they, have they ever been by the county? I mean, are you, have you looked at them? There you go.
Yeah, I mean, we do.
And you think the expenses is, well, basically, you agree with the expenses, right?
They seem reasonable.
Mr. Chairman, bottom line, I mean, during COVID, her numbers are down, but she's still helping four, four people?
Yes, four.
But in a, in a good year, she's got eight to twelve. So even if the number's four, I mean, she's transitioning four people from being released from prison, her, her, into, into productive members of society. If you look at her record, every year when we hear from her, it's phenomenal. I mean, and on a forty thousand dollar budget, if all you were helping was four people on forty thousand dollars, it would be, that'd be reasonable. But she's on, most years she's helping more than that. And the fact that the money is passed through, through an organization that already has a relationship with this board, that already has an audit, I don't see why she needs to pay ten percent of her operating expense for an audit, and then, you know, this is being passed through Florida Crown. Florida Crown is an audited institution. As long as she comes and presents to us every year and she's performing the mission, forty thousand dollars is a bargain for what we're getting, I think. And I think, I think she meets our audit requirement through Florida Crown.
I agree. They personally, I'd rather spend four or five thousand dollars to help out an individual than to spend on an audit. And if you use QuickBooks or some kind of, close to that, I, I will, I'll look at it and see, but, you know, it pretty much gives a whole, if you're, if you're registering all your expenses, you can look, you, I mean...
Well, Florida Crown paid the expenses, sorry.
Exactly. So, thank you, man.
Mr. Looker, if you have something to say? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is not about On Eagles Wings. They may, may not do good work. I've never researched what they do, and it's not about Florida Crown. Once again, it's about this board. It's not about, not about, as Mr. Witt said, Florida Crown is audited, so that makes everything fine. I listened to Mr. Murphy, I haven't been premium. You're gonna start waving procedures on everything. You guys said you wanted an audit, but that's not even what I mean to talk about. It's in the agenda packet, Mr. Chairman, on, on the agenda sheet, it says they supplied financial statements. And just like Mr. Crowe from behind me said, they're over there. This has been here a week. My question is, why aren't they with the agenda, Mr. Witt? I mean, if you guys are gonna have rules, the rules should be the same for everybody and for everything. So Mr. Crowe has them, and they're not getting into the agenda so the public can see them, stuff that's already been provided by Florida Crown, so they're certainly not at fault with this. Why isn't the stuff there, Mr. Chairman? You just sat there and asked if they did it. With all due respect, Mr. Chairman, if you would have looked at this, referred, answered my text message this morning, I would have told you, the agenda packet says you have the stuff. So once again, if you guys aren't running a tight ship, you can shuffle down the road, you can ask Mr. Foreman whether or not you want to answer a question or not, and then it doesn't get answered, but the answers to these questions are right in front of you in your own agenda packet. And you had the stuff, and it's not there. And that's not fair to On Eagles Wings, it's not fair to Florida Crown, and it's not fair to you, and it's not fair to the citizens of Columbia County. And if the county manager wants to fall down and not get the stuff in the agenda packet, well, that's something you gotta deal with, but you guys need to make some rules and stick by it. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
The, I've got one more question for gentlemen. You, you, you pay all the bills for Florida Crown, I mean, for On Eagles Wings through Florida Crown? I was unaware of that till Mr. Williams explained it.
No, actually, you gotta go to the mic. What we do, we cut a check to Ms. Brown with On Eagles Wings and begin another month that she can pay her bills, and then we invoice the county, and then the county reimburs us for that. We don't actually pay her bills, she pays her own bill.
Okay, okay. Ms. Williams made that statement, I'll just get clarification on that there. And for the record, as I said in two thousand and eighteen, this is a good program, and I personally know an individual that spent time at this, and he's doing well. I think it's a great thing. I hate to say the state of Florida cut it out, but I took the stand back in two thousand and eighteen, and everybody in this room agreed to it at that time. That was privy to that conversation, that, yeah, we'll, we'll step up and we'll do this. But knowing that the consensus of that board back then, which I'm pretty sure was unanimous, was simply that, you know, if we're gonna give out public funds to supply, to supply public programs, simply, we need to do our due diligence and work off of it. Because as you stated, this is not in your audit. This, as Mr. Powell stated yesterday, a forensic audit is what we are requiring, we just previously required five oh one C threes. That's all I'm, that's all I'm going now. This program is a good program. It is, I've known personally, I can speak for one man, it definitely helped him. And, but what we as a board are gonna be faced with is that you're gonna have more five oh one C threes that we just said, before you get a dime, you're gonna get an audit, we're gonna be providing audit. They're gonna be coming up here saying the same thing, and, you know, we, we need to be consistent. So...
Mr. Chairman, but I commend you, Ms. Brown, for what you do because he, he's doing well. I'm gonna say that.
Mr. Chairman, if, if it's, why don't we solve the problem? Why don't we increase our budget, four thousand dollars, so she can get the audit?
Done.
No problem with that.
I'll make that motion, I'll, I'll make a motion, we increase. Well, what was the concept of the audit, Mr.?
Um, it was going by Mr. Powell, who not giving the exact amount, but he said, well, the complete party deposit was between forty-five thousand dollars.
I'm sure he'll work with whatever we pass. Mr. Chairman, I make the motion, we increase On Eagles Wings' budget five thousand dollars for the specific person, purpose of having them audited by Mr. Powell. Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thanks, sir.
All right, thank you. And we need to put everybody we fund on notice before they withdraw any money to the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three budgets. They got to go back to the board and all.
Okay, you've done that, right, David?
We have sent them, we have contacted them. As you know, with the annual control folks, they're working on their last year's budget, our last year's audit, it's not completed yet, so we are still in a month-to-month type contractual basis with them, based on their last contract.
And, and we had that discussion and made that decision.
Well, if you don't refer contract before it. But we are requiring the audits, of course, they can only give it to us once they complete the audit, so we're working through that process.
Do you have something else you want to add?
Yeah, I just have to ask one question.
Thank you.
How, how often would you require an audit? Yearly or every five years or, or, I mean, that's just something we need to know in case we need to have an audit next year, we need to make sure that we're aware of that.
On the, on the contracts that I have read, an audit is required every five years.
So this budget will just be for this year, the next five, it'll be good five years?
Every five years, okay.
But then, but then you have the, I guess the others, like maybe a financial statement, a profit and loss statement, that every five years are required.
Okay. All right, David, let's move on to court courts, first and then versus.
First, Mr. Gaines. Commissioners, I just want to bring to your attention two recent attempts at fraudulent activity on the taxpayers' dollars. One is just for information, and two, I want to ask for action on your part. And the first is an attempt that somebody made to create a fraudulent check and, and pretty much ten thousand dollars. That's on the first page there. If you turn to the second... Uh, that's on the first page there. If you turn to the second, you can see what our actual checks, uh, look like, and you can see what the attempt was to, uh, to make that check, uh, look and resemble like it was a Columbia County check. Um, one of the safeguards we put in place is a system called positive pay. Every, before we send out a check, we will contact the bank and provide them with the information in regards to the checks that we are fixing to send out. Therefore, if they get, if they receive a check that does not match what we've sent them, they would call and ask us, um, you know, why is, why, what was the purpose, what's the deal with this check? And that's what happened here, and the reason we were able to stop this transaction from happening was our positive pay system that we put in place to protect, uh, the taxpayers' dollars there. So it's my understanding that this first page here is still under investigation, probably investigators at the bank. The second is an incident that happened at AgPro, uh, earlier this year, in which we cut them a check, uh, for services that they rendered. And they, uh, the check was delivered to their mailbox. Um, at their mailbox, they had somebody, um, at some point before the check was picked up, went into their mailbox and picked up several checks that had been delivered to them. Um, they were able to cash this county check, um, at the bank, going to an ATM and, um, and putting it in and getting, getting the funds that way. It didn't go to a teller, but went to an ATM. Now, in theory, the bank should have stopped this transaction because you see that it was signed by an individual and it was placed into an individual account, uh, even though it was made out to a business. The situation that we're dealing with with this particular check is that the AgPro has taken the position to demand, uh, payment for this, uh, for these funds that were rendered, even though we have previously paid these funds, that, because this did come out of, uh, of our funds, and they were never, um, we haven't been able to recoup those funds yet. So, um, AgPro, uh, is wishing to seek, uh, payment for those funds that they have not received yet because they were stolen from their mailbox. Um, so, or, and, and the reason it's not sensitive is because they put a date of tomorrow to solve, to, to get to receive these funds. They were going to take action on us. And on their invoices, where we are kind of behind the ball on this, on their invoices, language that would take this to a Georgia court. Uh, although we would feel comfortable defending ourselves here in Florida, it doesn't, it's not financially feasible for us to go hire a Georgia lawyer to defend these actions here. So I've been speaking with the state attorney's office. We have substituted, um, AgPro as the victim in this case, and we've, we have now taken on the victim role. A suspect has been prosecuted and been ordered to pay restitution. So there's two safeguards in place that we have, that we feel comfortable, that we will eventually be able to recover these funds. One is this week I filed an affidavit with the bank, uh, explaining that this was fraudulent activity, and they will go to the bank to cash this check and hopefully be able to recoup the full amount of those, uh, of those funds that were stolen. And the second safeguard is the individual has been ordered to pay restitution. Since AgPro no longer wants to be the victim in this case, that restitution will come to us. If we receive our funds in full from the bank, then we would transfer that restitution to, uh, to, to the bank that, that, that paid, that paid us back. So, um, I'm asking for you to possibly take action and approve the payment of this, uh, bill for the second time, realizing that we are going to hopefully receive a full reimbursement, um, for, for the funds that were taken.
So, Mr. Chair. Second. Got a motion and a second. All the way.
Aight.
Thank you. Jay, what's the safeguard in the future with AgPro as relevant to this happening next week?
So one of the things that we are going to be reviewing, um, and I know the county attorney is concerned about this too, is we are ensuring that all contracts that we, uh, that we, that we have with businesses and, and hopefully all future invoices that we receive, we can either negotiate or some remove language that takes, uh, takes the venue, so to speak, of, of any disputes for, for things like this. And instead of taking it to Georgia, we want it to be preferably under the, under the state of Florida, preferably in Columbia County, so that we can, uh, defend ourselves properly.
And, and commissioners, to be clear, we always do that when we have a contract for review. We never allow for an out-of-state choice of law form. We always require a form for any, uh, for any, uh, litigation to be Columbia County, always. What happened here is you're doing POs and court orders, and when they invoice you, they were putting it at the bottom. Hey, if there's ever a dispute about, so they snuck it in, but they did. And I'm gonna be directing staff. We're not, we're not doing nothing with those. Either, either AgPro is going to agree that the form for any dispute is here, or we're not gonna do business with AgPro. So, and, and we have to be real hard on that because, again, with something like this, all they have to do is threaten to sue us in Georgia over sixteen hundred dollar bill. It's gonna cost me five grand against Georgia.
Sure, sure.
And we, we're not gonna recover that money. So it becomes a business decision where, you know, and we don't wanna be in that position. I think Jay's doing, excuse me, the clerk is doing an excellent job of, of, uh, you know, he's very concerned about the public's money. I called him up like I would a normal private sector client, said, hey, it's gonna cost more to defend the additional sales, just cut the check. He said, wait a minute now, but that, that, that doesn't feel right, which I agree. I think if we could have defended this in Columbia County, we would have remained. Uh, we're clearly not the victim here, but they assume that role just to get this out. And, and, and the reason I voted on that because he did say that we assumed the role of victim, but had we not, I just can't believe AgPro would jeopardize doing business with the county over a sixteen, like a hundred dollar bill. It kinda hurts me. It's kinda on them. You know, I'd say you need to get a PO, a post office box or something more secure because, you know, we didn't steal the check out of your, out of your.
There was a lot of discussion leading up to this.
So, yeah, and, and I mean, I'm with you, John, it takes my opinion of now that they would even threaten that, uh, as far as doing business with them in the future.
So I will cut the check out today and deliver it tomorrow.
Thank you. Okay, David, did you wanna do the purchasing officer?
Yes. I wanted to announce to the board that, um, Mr. Comer, purchasing director, has submitted letter of resignation, uh, tendering a four-week notice. So that kinda puts us on a short timeframe. So we had, uh, Lisa Roberts, our HR director, um, draft up a revised personal description or the job position we'd like to do approved so that we can advertise the revised job description, try and get somebody in place. We had come up with option B, and pursuing different options as well. We're gonna make sure this is a critical position to keep the county moving forward. We've gotta have somebody in purchasing position.
But sure, I've, I've, uh, uh, went over the twenty-two changes that, uh, I made, and I don't have a problem with. Boy, that does not, uh, I moved it off the, uh, the, uh, purchasing, uh, policy, uh, guidelines.
Second. Got a motion and a second in discussion. All the way.
Aight. Thank you very much.
Okay, uh, this time we're gonna have two moves. Do you have any comment, other comments? Everybody get, hold up there. Speech, they hit their mic, but we're gonna hear you.
I've been having problems with animal control for a year now, so much so, the rat, I never really come into my house next week. Um, this has caused financial hardship.
Please get a little closer.
We can't hear if you're talking, uh, all the way.
You just really lie. Try that other mic, oh, the other side. Try the other mic, see if it's better.
Better?
Yeah, there you go.
I've had a problem with animal control for a year now. Um, I don't feel like my voice is being heard. Um, this has put me in a very big financial hardship, and it's also hurting my health. I have a relative coming next week. I, I'm, I've had it. I'm tired of bringing animals to animal control because they're too busy. I still am waiting for a letter of apology from Robin for jamming my hand in the door when she was abusing her employees in front of me. Um, we went to court on the eighth. That went well. But the people that I'm talking about went and got, once again, another ant. When does it end? When does it end? When I have a stroke and die?
So what kind of problems are you having?
Um, my neighbors keep getting, they get animals faster than I eat dinner. I mean, it's ridiculous. Um, their animals are always on my property. Um, they're, one of their old animals wouldn't let me out of my car, wouldn't let me out of my house. Um, anytime it would charge me, I'm disabled. Um, let's see, ripped up my yard three times, destroyed two of my service dogs. You don't see a dog here, do you? No, I'm disabled. I need my animals. I am out. Over fifty thousand dollars. How am I supposed to do that? I'm on a fixed income, and nobody seems to care. I do. It's my life. I keep having strokes over this. When is something gonna happen? When is somebody gonna do something? There's no accountability in this town. Why? I'm not gonna get on my hands and knees and beg anybody to help me. I'm gonna take it further.
So you're having trouble with your neighbor's dogs?
Yes.
They, they killed your dogs?
No, they destroyed my dogs. My dogs got hurt. I had to go through, my one dog went through two surgeries, another dog went through one. Um, one dog can't even barely walk, so how can I take him? And the other one, she doesn't like people anymore, so she's, she's actually afraid of people now. So, do you know how much service dogs are? Do you know how much service dogs are?
What is animal control's responsibility?
Um, the day before court, their dog was on my property again, and when I called them, they said, I says, I've got the dog, come get it. Oh, we can't. We're only dealing with emergencies. I've, anytime I've gone, I've had to pick up my own traps. It's ridiculous, ridiculous. These dogs are always loose. Now, I'm, I'm assuming that the, these people, because they fixed their fence supposedly, then they're fine for everything that they've done for a year is gonna be waived. But yet, I'm out. I'm out on whole life savings. I'm out two service dogs, and nobody seems to care. Where, where am I gonna come up with the money to get my service dogs back? I don't even have money to put my dog down.
Chair, I've been, uh, working with Ms. Sosa, uh, me and her talk quite regularly. Uh, I'm on the, uh, I reached out to the magistrate, Mr. Douglas. He personally brought by an order to my shop, uh, relevant to this, uh, court case, uh, hearing that they just had, uh, a couple of weeks ago. It's, it's, Vernon was very detailed. It started back in April. It started way before that, but there was a hearing in April that certain animals were supposed to be picked up. As a commissioner, uh, you know, I've already been deemed a bad guy because I even asked a question about animal shelters. Uh, but that's neither here nor there. But my point is simple is that, uh, somebody on this staff, I feel like with Joel, needs to sit down with Mr. Douglas and animal control, take the commissioners out of being the bad guys, because if I'm interpreting what I'm reading there correctly, and I'm pretty darn sure I am, somebody's not doing their job. Paying for a service that apparently we're not getting. And, uh, this doesn't need to be kicked down the road. This is, uh, uh, you know, in, for a complete outsider to assume that this is bogus, what she's saying, is totally irrelevant. And, you know, if somebody walks up, they can simply up to say, well, this is a neighbor against the neighbor, uh, not when you got pictures. And, you know, and when you read through the court orders and the guidance that Mr. Douglas gave them, and then all of a sudden, boom, you, you see statements from animal control, you know, within a week or two after that. It, it, we got an individual who, uh, doesn't have no regard for the law. Uh, and, and I guess one of my biggest questions at this point in time, the judge, this is a continuing thing with this particular person. And the judge says, go pick up these animals with this order, you know, if they're outside, then all of a sudden, well, he gives animals back to the animal shelter. But boom, next day, he goes by, pop belly pings. You know, a- a- and so my, my point, my, I guess my second question to you as a lawyer, and our lawyer, is there a way that we can, can we put restrictions on an individual for constant abuse or whatever that had to get to the issue?
Yeah, a, a, a court absolutely can enjoy people from owning animals, and from owning too many animals. Uh, you know, whether the magistrate can reach that level, uh, we, we'd leave it in his discretion to determine that. Uh, I, I think part of what, Commissioner Murphy, you, you dealt with animal control issues for a couple of years, and that pretty, pretty well, nonstop. And I think what it always comes down to when you and I speak is, you know, the county really doesn't have direct control over the animal control officers and where they go and when they go and when they're on, you know, that, that's not something you control. We have that contracted out, and it's controlled by the third party that you're contracting with. So I, I'd like to develop solutions that'll be satisfactory to the commission, but we're always gonna have that limitation with any solution. And, and that you're, you're creating the solutions and handing them to a third party to do. Um, and so I think that's always, and it's just through, again, through experience and discussion and the meetings that we've had, I think that's always gonna be the stumbling block when it comes to satisfying the commission on the issue of animal.
And, and, and simply moving forward to the board, that's the exact situation we're in. We're funding something that we have no control over. And can we put it in there contractually to do this, this, and this? Uh, sure, sure we can. And, and not saying anybody's been wrong in the past, but, uh, somehow, but we answer to the constituents. And an individual, uh, shouldn't have to live through what this family right here has been going through for the last year and a half. You know, I mean, Mr. Chairman, you know, it's, it's our responsibility as a board, I'm sorry, Mr. Williams, but, but, uh, it's our responsibility as a board to the constituents to, uh, to provide animal control. Uh, a- and, and, and we do it through a third-party vendor right now. We're in this year's budget year, so we're kinda, we're kinda, I mean, it, something needs to change. This is the kind of stuff we need to hear about, so we can make those changes. Uh, you know, we're in the beginning of this budget year, but animal control keeps coming up. We all get the complaints. And, you know, it, it, we need to hear this. We need this documented. We need this brought forward to us. But we also need to be thinking about, as a board now, all these problems. How are we gonna fix it in the future? Because, you know, we're in this budget year now, but October's gonna be on this next year, and we're, and that, that's the time to make the change. And so, um, you know, if, if they're not, if a judge is putting out an order and they're not doing their job, I mean, and, and I, and, 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 you know, you give them with it, so you've got the court history, stuff we need to know. And, and, and we as a board need to start thinking now, how are we gonna deal with animal control in the future? I mean, this woman, they did their presentation here, you know, uh, a few months ago, and I said, we gotta think about the question, you know, we're, we're, we're paying for animal control and animal services, and how much of that are we willing to do in the future? Right. So there's, there's a lot to do with animal control and how we continue to provide it in the future. We gotta make some decisions on, and we need to start thinking about that now, because I'm telling you, we're gonna be in October before you know it. And, uh. Commissioner, that's exactly why I asked Ms. Sosa to come up this morning and, and, uh, and, and, and you're exactly right. And hopefully with David, moving forward, we can kinda get the ball.
Mr. Mayor, manager is one more point. That's corporate. So Animal Control has reached out to me and County Manager Kraus several times over the last couple of weeks, wanting to read up their contract. And we have explained pretty bluntly that in light of the conversations that happened during the budget hearing, particularly Commissioner Witt's comment, which she's now echoed, that's what made me remember it, until this board decides if you wanna just fund animal control or if you're comfortable funding animal services, based on the presentation they gave in the budget hearing, I can't really negotiate a contract, because they're telling you they wanna do animal services, and the only formal direction that's ever come from this board is only animal control. So we have a disconnect. I can't negotiate that contract. We're not talking about the same thing. If there could be a workshop, or if we can maybe put it on the next agenda for further discussion and action, to, to determine what are your objective with respect to this? Do you wanna do animal services, or do you wanna stick to animal control? If you clarify that for staff and for myself, then we can go negotiate. We've also informed, uh, Animal Control that although you did appropriate enough money to pay for the increase they requested, you have not formally accepted. the increase they requested, you have not formally accepted or approved the increase. You put the money in the budget, but you've not yet contracted for it. So I, I think based on this conversation, maybe a, a, a workshop on the issue where the board can formalize its, its philosophy.
Mr. Williams. Chairman, I, I agree with, with some of the conversation that Commissioner Whit have, have said, you guys go. We, we got to make a decision. No one should have lived to, apparently what happens on the span, from the young lady right there, what's going on in her case. I got a case similar to that, where something going to be done one way or the other. Don't, something going to happen. Go down to your, down to your, down to your, down to your, you don't feel long all night and tired and fucking up the pain, hard in your ear, and nothing done. But we need to have a, a, a good dialogue among this board and the main society and the animal control. Lay out agreements, what we don't like, what we like to see, if they can run it like we want it ran, then we need to do something different. Just that simple. So I, 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 I'll talk for being in the animal control business, but if we have to, if a situation like this happens, then we have, we have to do that. But no matter what we do, I think we got to be in a relationship between either this board, the animal control that you manage, or you need, you can't have one without the other. They're complicated, more than that, so to speak. But I'm, 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 I've come first here, let's have a workshop, straighten on this. Get everybody in here that's got to sit down and, and help us.
I agree, I agree, Commissioner Williams. Also, would like to see in that workshop, because obviously there's a lot, there's a lot of, of situations like hers going on. And we, we need the, we need, we need those presented to us, and we need the facts and everything behind them, all the backup material we can get, because we need them to answer where the breakdowns are, so we can decide how we want to move forward. Can I ask something? You may know, or she may not know. So you're telling me that there was a pickup order on an animal? I'm just, I heard all this, I'm not sure I'm hearing this correctly. There's a pickup order on an animal, a nuisance animal. She called in on that nuisance animal, and they said, we're only doing emergencies. Is that what they said to you?
Not to cut you off, Robbie. And it gets pretty complex. Okay, the way it works is she made the call, this animal is loose again, and after that, April, something ruined. Okay, well, you'll have to come in, stop me from running. You have to come in, and it says in the court order, make an affidavit and get it notarized. Well, the individual, being her or any others throughout the county, they got to come in, sign an affidavit, go get it notarized, because nobody at the facility is the notary, then bring it back in order for them to go forward. But in one of the statements I read from the judge yesterday, it stated that, you know, it's on a priority schedule, so I don't quote me to the exact words, due to, and, and I'm sure they've had COVID issues, you know, so, so it's, even though it may be very important to her, you know, due to COVID issues, as what was stated in the statement, you know, it's, it, it, it's not, but, but, but out of thirty-something employees, I would assume somebody out of thirty-something employees could have been around there and got a dog by that day.
Well, and I would tell you, a vicious dog is top priority.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. And, 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 and.
And they don't have a notary out of forty-something?
No, no, no. And, 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 and just to take one more step forward, I mean, a little bit farther, sometime back, I got with the sheriff and I was able to meet with all the supervisors at the sheriff's office. Animal control went with me, Robin and one of her assistants. It was a good meeting, it was a very good meeting. You know, got on the same, okay, so if you'll remember when Ms. Hartley was, you know, robbed around there, that's what activated all that. And so anyway, so what happens is, we come to an agreement that when you go to a bite, a dog bite situation, call the sheriff department, do this, this, and this. And then, of course, everybody was in the bridge, left their happy hug and everything. And then during the budget cycle, you know, there was a statement made, I think it perturbed the sheriff, that, you know, something that they weren't giving cooperation at the sheriff's office. And, and the sheriff, he was dumbfounded, because as I made my point, I thought everything was going good, you know, so. It, it, there's a lot of problems, and it's, but there, there's, and, and of course, Robin been around longer than us, I bet you've been dealing with this a long time.
And it sounds like it's so, so hard to do, it's like me, if, if I see somebody, I'm supposed to, you know, I got to go and get a court order and get it, or, or go get an affidavit. I mean, we need somebody out there looking at the dog, and they dip down, and I see it's.
So I'm.
So the best question for you, would y'all like to discuss this at that November meeting?
I think this is going to be, this is going to be a long meeting, it's going to be a separate issue.
So, would you want to set a date?
I, I'm with Commissioner Williams, I think we should set it at the first year.
Okay. Set it at the first year, y'all.
And I think, and the reason for that is, I think, we're going to want to research and get all this background information on all, all the situations like hers, because I know there's several out there, and, and we're not all aware of them, and all that needs to be laid on the table at, at this special meeting. And, and they can answer to it, and we can figure out how we fix it moving forward, because it's broken, obviously.
But in the meantime, commissioners, if I could, if I'm not overstepping my bounds, I'd like for David to put whatever group together to at least, and I'll, I'll give you this court order that Mr. Douglas gave me, and just to make sure that, you know, it's being enforced, it's being done the right way. And then, and hopefully I have the money that we're giving them, maybe they can go to the extent to get somebody certified as a member of there.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention, just.
And I, I thank you, man.
Do you have a notary that you use close by, or is that?
At the bank.
At the bank?
Yeah, but I'm on a fixed income. It's costing a lot of money for a cat to go there constantly. And I would like to say I am in contact with the government as far as, or it has a law stating that animals are personal property. I'm trying to change that.
What does it cost to do it every day?
It's five bucks every time you go, but because I'm a member of that bank, I agree with you pretty much.
Thank, thank you, man. Thanks for bringing this up.
And the county does have no reserves on.
I was saying, I agree with Commissioner Murphy, y'all can intervene immediately and make sure, whatever we can do in her situation, it's resolved immediately. But I think we don't have a future workshop to address the, the overwhelming, the overall problem.
Okay, staff, y'all ready? I can do it. Mr. Williams?
Catholic.
Come on up.
You guys, you're just getting to the front. Only one.
You ain't seen nothing yet.
No. Yeah. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I'm with Ms. Sosa, we have the special magistrate jury, magistrate Douglas, or Judge Douglas, not Vernon Douglas, at a public meeting. And I listened to her, and I saw the case, I had pictures of her at the case. What's amazing is, you guys would know what went on there, if there was some kind of record. But there is no record. When Mr. Foreman set up the special magistrate problem, he may try to get rid of the civilian part of this, not this board, but another board, Ronald was on that board, you got rid of the civilian side, which could hear some of these cases if you had one, and might take a different approach. But it's costing you guys $2,000 in appearance every time Judge Douglas shows up there, which is a little excessive. And what you have, if you listen to Ms. Sosa, is you've got an animal problem, but you've got a people problem. And the judge dealt with this at the hearing. And of course, you don't know what happened at the hearing. I would tell you that the county is derelict, they're not having any record of the hearings, there's no transcripts, there's no video, and unless I'm there, there's no goddamn audio. So how are you guys going to decide anything, Mr. Wick, on hearsay? And rumors and propaganda, and getting statements from one person and that's the other person not seeing everything? It's the way you guys operate. I have one question, so you need to look into that. There are, there are opinions by the attorney general on whether or not you need a record from a special magistrate. And I will tell you one thing, you guys aren't doing it. And if you did do it, Ms. Sosa might not be in the position that she's in now. The other question I have is a similar one. Earlier in the meeting, Mr. Hollingworth, you passed a.
I was just asking if you said the words you just said. If you want to really get down to the nail, nail on the head, I don't appreciate you saying GD in front of us, or any of these other people in this crowd, I appreciate you talking about it.
Did I say that?
Yeah.
I apologize.
Damn sure did. That's what you sound like.
Thank you, Mr. I, I, I apologize, Mr. Hollingworth, I didn't understand.
Apologize to those people, huh?
I apologize to you too. The other thing is, you, you approved the $5,000 amendment to the persons, to, to Eagles Wings, so they can get an audit. Mr. Murphy brought up that he brought up that everybody needs to audit, this Overstreet brought up that they need it once every five years. The question that I have is, and being that it's public funds, is now everybody entitled to have the county commission increase their budgets by whatever it costs to get it in way, $5,000, which you just did this time, or just Eagles Wings? I would say you have sort of a legal problem with that, and maybe Mr. Foreman could answer that, along with the question that I asked at the beginning of the meeting. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, sir. What's that?
I don't think we have a legal problem with that at all. I think on Eagles Wings was a special case, where we know what their budget is, we know what they're providing based on that budget, and does that entail what everybody that required to, to get $5,000 from the county to do their audits? No, but in her case, it was a reasonable thing to do, based on her overall budget and the mission that she, that, that she has in the services that she can prove she provides.
Anybody else say that? Uh, Judge Aaron.
All right.
Two minutes. You got it?
Ten minutes.
The, the.